Everyone this evening to our ordinance meeting. We're gonna start tonight with our subdivision ordinance. And it's a way of us taking a look and revising and making sure that we know what our ordinance say. And we appreciate the time that Mr. McLaughlin, our town manager, has done as far as putting this together. But this time I'll call our meeting to order, and I'll turn this over to Mr. McLaughlin.
Hello, Madam Mayor, board members. As you are aware, we've been working on or at least considering some changes to our subdivision ordinance, many of which I've pushed, but things that I feel are warranted and things that I feel are needed based on the climate of development that I see coming on the horizon. As you all aware, a lot of times I pay attention to trends and I look for ways that we can strengthen our ordinance. Sometimes I may come to you with ways to kind of reduce some of the regulations if I feel that they're a little bit heavy-handed. So, we've looked at the subdivision ordinance in the past. Today is our second work session with some pretty common sense ideas that I think we should consider. And so I'll start. In terms of where we are now, we conducted our first of the most recent work sessions on the 21st of September. And they mainly focused on yard space, off-street parking areas, and street scape provisions. I'll revisit those and then I'll add what I do think is something that's very impactful that I will present to you later this evening. In terms of the landscape requirements that we were initially talking about in terms of commercial, I've listed the sections of our actual Town of Hope Mills zoning ordinance that we would change in the landscaping requirement section. This is based on what I initially said at our first work session, that we have landscaping requirements, but I think they need to be strengthened tremendously. These are the code sections. So, in the street scape provision section, we're basically, and everything you see here is doubling what's there now. At the last work session, I listed current language, but what you see here is double what we currently have. So, in terms of the street scape amendments, we have basically two shade trees in the front yard or six flowering ornamental trees per each 50 linear feet of street frontage. And you always get credit for trees that you save. But again, the current ordinance only requires one shade tree or three flowering ornamentals. So, we're doubling what they have to do. Now, these street scape provisions, yard space, and off-street parking all apply to one property. As you recall, when we're doing our landscaping requirements, especially for commercial, there are three areas that you all have to meet all three. So, it's not a one or the other, but they actually attack three different portions of that property, and they all have their own different requirements. So, again, everything we're adding is doubling what's there now. Question, were any of you able to visit the Circle K off Glensford and Main to see what I'm talking about? When you see those and you see ours, you can visibly see that there is just a lot more landscaping. It's not that ours is not in compliance, it's in full compliance with our current ordinance. But this is why I'm doubling our ordinance. But even at that, if you hear a developer say, "This is too heavy-handed," we're doubling ordinance. At the doubled language that I'm proposing, we're still below the Fayetteville Udo. So, even though we are probably considered one of the second most stringent ordinances in the county, we're still below the threshold of the Fayetteville Udo with this change. In regards to yard space, this would be two ornamental trees for every 50 feet of building length or width and four shrubs. Right now, it's only one ornamental tree and two shrubs. In the parking areas, it's two trees, a minimum of 10 feet in height, and 12 shrubs for every 15 feet of parking. It's half that and only eight feet in height. So, I'm increasing the height of the tree, doubling the amount of the required landscaping. Now, if you're talking about residential, one thing that I pointed out at the last work session is we currently don't have landscaping requirements in residential. It's pretty out there because you see a tree on every single family lot. They're doing that without it being required. Right now, our landscaping section only references commercial and mixed use. We don't have anything in residential. So, what I'm basically doing is what I presented at the last meeting, one tree per lot for any proposed subdivision for the creation of one of more than 10 lots. And they're gonna be required to have a 3.5 caliber tree at 10 feet in height. The ones they're planting out now that aren't required is, I call them twigs. It's the little twig they get from those, it's about five feet high. So, you're getting a 10-foot-tall tree, 3.5 inches in caliber. That's a pretty significant size, but not something to where I feel that a developer would consider that to be too heavy-handed. But I don't think requiring one tree per lot is that big of a push because they're already doing that. We just don't have it as a requirement. But I'm also putting a threshold in there because the definition of a subdivision is when someone takes one lot and cuts it in half. I don't think it's practical in those standard situations. So, I set a 10-lot minimum. It only applies at the creation of your 10 lots or more. That's your bigger subdivision. If you look at all the subdivision we're annexing, there's 75 lots, 150 lots. So, it'd apply to those. But something that's a four-lot subdivision, even though that's technically fitting the definition of subdivision, I don't think it would apply. Now, this next one is the doozy that I think is great. I'll read it in its entirety for the record. "The city shall maintain and make available a list of recommended plant materials hardy to the Hope Mills area and a plant list for materials suitable for planting under power lines." Now, we would probably coordinate with PWC for those. They do have a list that they help maintain for the city of Fayetteville that specifically tie the trees under power lines. Plant material not on the list may be approved by the town on a case-by-case basis. In the absence of our list, the list published by the North Carolina Cooperative Extension shall serve as the list of recommended trees. That's the typical language you see in most all ordinances. But we do currently now have a plant list for the Town of Hope Mills. I worked very closely, I have to give credit to Lamarcus Morrison. Many of you may not realize, we're both landscape architects. So, he's developed this. I'm tweaking it, but it's large trees, shrubs, ground covers that are not only native and hardy to the Fayetteville area and Hope Mills area, but all of North Carolina's zone seven through eight. And they actually thrive in wet soil and dry conditions. That's where I'll pass this out for the record. Now, as you look through this, the reason why I say it's in draft form, this will, we'll probably add to this, but this is a really, really great collection. Now, in the absence, again, this is a catch-all. In the absence of the list, the North Carolina Cooperative Extension has a list that is referencing every ordinance in the state that supplants as the substitute in case someone swears they can't find this. But we have never had this language in our ordinance at all. Now, this would apply, I have it in the residential section, but this applies to commercial as well. But we definitely have never had our own plant list for the town. Now, the part that I talked about with PWC is the fact that when you have trees, actually, this happened at the Walmart, neighborhood Walmart off Legion Road. Where that Waffle House is, all the trees they specify along Legion Road were under a power line. Now, we amended the landscaping, the landscape plan out there with the contractor. I didn't have a reference list to go by. And so, the reference list for the plants that are trees under power lines, I would work directly with PWC who maintains the power lines. But they have a list that they actually help maintain for the city of Fayetteville. So, some of this language you're using, we are pulling from other ordinances that actually do work. And what we're also gonna do in our subdivision ordinance, because as you recall, our landscaping requirement section is in our zoning ordinance. We have nothing in our subdivision ordinance. So, instead of me taking all this stuff and just restating it in the subdivision ordinance, the cross-reference at the bottom will go into Section 86A, that's 403, in terms of the minimum lot standards. Right now, these standards go from A through H. We will be creating another section called I. And you're basically just referencing all the regulations applicable in 102A-1202N of the Hope Mills zoning ordinance. So, you're just cross-referencing the landscaping requirements that do apply to residential that we're listing in the landscape section of the zoning ordinance.
Commissioner Marley has a question.
Yeah, shoot.
Under the landscaping requirements, there, with the trees.
Yes.
You were talking about planting a tree in the yard. And you mentioned four lots or more, is that what you said?
10 lots or more for what we're doing.
10 lots or more.
Yeah.
Go back to what you were talking about. I heard four somewhere, where you said it doesn't, you wouldn't think it would apply.
Well, what I was talking about is typically what we try to do is create thresholds that apply where the definition of the subdivision in our ordinance is the creation of a lot. So, if you have one lot and you're cutting it in half, that's considered a subdivision. So, I feel that it wouldn't be practical to do that in terms of applying the regulations for one tree per lot on something so small. So, what a lot of people do is create a threshold. Now, the threshold I'm proposing is 10 lots. We could make it smaller if you want. It's just the fact that a lot of times these regulations aren't practical for a smaller subdivision. Most of the subdivisions we're annexing in are your bigger, larger ones. If you guys wanted just to actually make it across the board to any subdivision, whether it's one lot or 10.
So, what would keep a developer or contractor or whatever from coming in and permitting 10 lots at a time to get?
That is a very good question. Now, for the total of 175 lots, he'd have to do that that many times. But for your smaller 30-lot subdivision, he could come in three times to do that. So, if that's a concern, I would just suggest just removing the threshold. Just to say the creation of a subdivision, a lot, you would require that.
I don't know how to risk the board, Phil. I think if you're gonna do it, you might as well do it across the board and do away with the threshold because I can see that happening. So, you'll have a 30-lot subdivision with no trees planted back.
And they'll get replanted 10 times, yeah, three times. Now, that is what I call dummy-proofing an ordinance. What you're doing is you're trying to find holes and cracks where you're thinking it could be manipulated. If that's a concern, I have no issue.
That's what I would do.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that.
I would agree with Mr. Marley. They'll find a way around it. They may find a way around it anyway. But I agree that if they put one lot in, they put a tree. If they put 100 lots in, they put 100 trees.
And?
That's dummy-proof there.
And I would ask if somehow we can put crepe myrtle in this list because supposedly crepe myrtle is our town tree. And it's not listed. It does grow well, it does grow well in this area. And it is what Mayor Dever told us, that a long time ago they had chosen that as the Hope Mills tree.
Well, a lot of times, crepe myrtles, and this is a landscape architecture inside joke, I guess, it's not the crepe myrtle, it's the pruning of them. Most crepe myrtles, it's almost like hearing someone scratch the chalkboard when I'm driving by. And I see, we call it the burning bush. Because when they prune them the wrong way, it just turns into a big bush. You're supposed to prune crepe myrtles up so that it creates the canopy because most of them, we specify, can be about 10 feet, 11 feet tall. So, if that canopy is pruned up, I can see under it. If you shave the top off it like you always do, it's gonna turn into the burning bush. And it's an inside joke. So, it's not that we don't want to add it in. What I may do is whip certain, and this is why I said, it's a perfect example of why I said it's still in draft form. We may put some standard minimum requirements on maintaining certain types of trees. We had a situation in another municipality where they planted a row of about 30 of them in a median, and they all became bushes, and it became a massive DOT issue. Because once you do it, you almost gotta rip them up. But tell a neighborhood, you pulling up crepe myrtles, that's not gonna go well. So, I don't have an issue adding them in. I think what I would add to that is the requirements of making sure that they're pruned properly.
June speaking, DOT uses them quite a lot for landscaping because they thrive in dry conditions.
Yeah.
So, that would be, that would be the only thing. But I do recall that that's when we started the crepe myrtle fund years ago.
Yes.
And that was done because Mayor Dever said that, and I don't know what point in time they decided, but that's just a thought.
Yeah, not a problem at all.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
My ideal of putting these trees in the yard is not just for the looks, but for the canopy of shade. You got a swing, you wanna set none of the shade tree. You can do that. Nothing against the crepe myrtle, but it's just gonna be hard to put it under that tree. I don't mind seeing the other plants on the lot having to be crepe myrtle. But my idea of a tree in a lot is for shade eventually.
You could, like, someone like me, I have a crepe myrtle in my front yard. It was about that tall when I bought my house. I know how to take care of it, landscape spikes, watering and things of that nature. It's ironic that about eight months ago, my neighbor came by, he said, "Man, you planting another tree?" I said, "No, Frank, that's the same one, it's just been taken care of." It's about 12 feet tall now. So, I know how to take care of them, your typical person don't. So, sometimes we have to put certain regulations in. And I think that's the only thing that some people have a drawback with crepe. That's a crepe myrtle at the bottom, bottom right photograph. But it's really how you prune it. And I think we can put that in there, it's not a problem. It's a lot of stuff I didn't put in there that I'm probably gonna add because when you're talking about a certain caliber and a certain height, there are diagrams you can actually add. That's one thing I would love to see added. Because some ordinances, when you're able to put a diagram or a drawing in or a figure in to coincide with the regulation, it makes it a lot easier to understand. So, that's one thing I'm kinda torn with in the back of my mind in digitizing our subdivision ordinance and our zoning ordinance by putting some graphics in to kinda give people an idea of what we're talking about. But again, the cross-reference piece is everything we're talking about in the zoning ordinance, we're gonna pretty much add a reference to it in our subdivision ordinance. And this kinda goes to the plant list. Like I said, as the town takes necessary steps to increase our level of landscaping, it's equally important to raise the standards on the types of vegetation that's planted. This ensures that the regulations tied to the health and safety of required plantings are maintained at a high level. Like I said, they're in draft form, they're hardy trees, small trees, shrubs, and ground covers that are native to zone seven through eight, which is basically all of North Carolina. And they thrive in wet soils and also they're adaptable to all soil types. So, I think Parks and Rec will be using some of these at our lake, which is why some of them pretty much thrive in both conditions. And like I said, as earlier, in the absence of the list, or let's say this goes live and for some reason that cooperative extension list serves as a backup. So, there should never be a time when someone doesn't have access to a list. But I think it's groundbreaking because up until now, we've never had that in our ordinance. So, a lot of times when I'm getting my landscape plans from these developers, I'm stuck with whatever they have. Sometimes you can kinda get them, Cardinal Landscaping is a great company where if you kinda work with them and if you're just kinda trying to tell them, like, "Look, can you specify another plant here?" If you get to them earlier, they'll do it. But I didn't have a place of reference as a requirement. Now, I can just cross-reference the landscape plan to make sure that the things they're proposing are on our required list. And that's basically it. What I have, and I'll keep this as we go through our work sessions, I'll keep this as a standard last page in terms of cross-references. We actually have already started that. Bruce and Don are working through some of the fixes in our standards and specs. So, what'll happen is some of these changes in other ordinance that will need to run parallel with this change, I've mentioned the Green Growth Toolbox, that probably has to be its own work session. But that's gonna have to include Beth Brown in the stormwater ordinance. So, what we may do is at some point have a whole section of cross-references in our subdivision ordinance that actually speak to. Like, for instance, in the standards and specs, we always dealing with subdivision on the diameter of cul-de-sacs, street whiffs and things of that nature. We have some of that stuff in our subdivision ordinance, but the standards and specs was derived more recently. So, we're talking about just putting some stuff in our subdivision ordinance that if someone's looking in that section, they'll know that you can't do a hammerhead as an ending of a street in our subdivision ordinance. It's not listed now, it is in our standards and specs. So, a lot of times after subdivision has been designed and they're trying to actually go to permitting, and Don and Bruce will tell them, "You can't do this at a hammerhead." They've never seen it in our subdivision ordinance yet.
I have a question, and so does Commissioner Marley. Have we looked at or thought about some of the ways of, I'll give you an example. I saw just recently a Dollar General, which makes me, the reason why I say this is because we're getting one.
Yeah.
But instead of that Dollar General, it has a different look. And it also is built closer to the road, the parking is more to the back.
To the back.
And the landscaping then is at the front, and there's not a lot of asphalt. The same thing with a service station. What they had done is the gas pumps were actually on the back. And the front of the service station was, the landscaping was there. And so, what happened was what was on, what would be like on Main Street would be the?
The front is along the street.
The front of the building, but the actual working parts of it were behind it if there was, if it was available. In other words, in that case, with ours, it would've been available because you'd have the back entrance too off of Bullard Street. So, I was just wondering, is there anything that we can do? I know we're looking, we're looking at that overlay district and that commercial district and historical district. I know we're talking about maybe how we could at least have a plan for what we want it to look like.
I'm trying not to smile.
Okay.
Because now we're talking. What you're talking about in my world is called new urbanism. New urbanism is a design methodology that is promote, that promotes more pedestrian connectivity to streets. It is designed in a way that the parking is hitting, hit. So, you have the building in the front, the parking in the rear. If you're talking about high-rises, you have the parking deck wrapped, these are requirements, wrapped inside of the building where even on a city block, you have a certain minimum percentage of what we call fenestration. Fenestration is storefrontage. So, let's say you have a whole city block of a new building and it's four stories tall. You can't have a whole block of just bricks at the ground level. At the ground level, 75% of that entire street has to be active uses. All of that is tied under the tenants of what we call new urbanism. And if that's where you guys want me to go, we can definitely do that. That's where we're talking about certain things in overlay districts and our downtown areas and things of that nature where we could really explore some of that because that's what I would love to see where when I'm pulling into a place, I see the building first. I don't see a sea of cars and things of that nature. Even with the Green Growth Toolbox, that is a different way of doing subdivisions through our stormwater ordinance. So, those are called low-impact developments where instead of us putting storm ponds all throughout and curb and gutter, you have these swells where you're using specific types of native plants. The plants treat and deal with the water runoff in an environmentally sensitive way, but it looks better. So, that is where, what you're talking about with new urbanism, that's really increasing quality of life. We're talking about sidewalk requirements that we're putting in, we're talking about grants. Now, we're talking about a 10-foot zone at the street, which is called a site furniture zone and a sidewalk zone where you can put benches out by the sidewalk. All of this is what falls into the tenants of new urbanism. And you're treating the area closest to the street in a way that's more conducive for pedestrians. Sometimes in some practice, some instances, it's not practical, but we can definitely take that approach. It's very practical in commercial areas where you kinda have more close-knit, denser development. I think it'd be a little bit more difficult to do than the Camden Road, Main Street area, but Trade Street is perfect for that. So, I can make our next work session really just giving you guys some ideas and some examples of how these developments can be done properly but in a way that actually is, it fits what we're trying to do here at Hope Mills.
Commissioner Marley?
Yes, ma'am. As far as stormwater, and you mentioned stormwater ponds, that was what my comment was gonna be. Since the mayor mentioned Dollar General, I'll use that as an example. The Dollar General that's out on Chingafoot Road has a storm pond beside it. That thing looks terrible.
Yeah.
Is there gonna be something in our stormwater, the ordinance for stormwater about maintenance of these, keeping them clean? If you look at the CVS on Legion Road, right there, Legion Road and Black and Deckard Road, same thing. Does stormwater in front of it? It's designed for stormwater, but it's overgrown, the fence is tore all to pieces all the time.
I have a very specific feeling about ponds. But from a landscape architecture standpoint, I don't like them at all. But what you could achieve with the green growth is something in that level. But what, and speaking for Beth Brown, she's probably screaming through the computer screen right now to make sure I don't say this the wrong way. But in her ordinance, they do regulate certain things. But I think the difference between us and Fayetteville is we never take ownership of the ponds. So, I think there are regulations that she has in her ordinance that allows us to possibly pursue people maintaining them that way. But she always will push for underground storage. Now, it's a little bit more expensive, but that's something that would eliminate the pond on the surface level.
I mean, if they're not, if they're not maintaining them, I know we don't have ownership of them, but they're in the town, if they're in the city limits or the town limits. Is there like monetary thing that we can assess to make sure that they do manage?
The way I'll answer that question is I will probably have to lean on Beth Brown because I know there are regulations in place. I don't feel comfortable citing them in her absence. But I do know it's not something where we just have our hands tied. I do know there are regulations that govern that. And I do know they go to great lengths to maintain those, but I would have to lean on her expertise.
I feel like if it's a case of the fencing is broken, that that's something they would have to fix.
Yeah.
But if it's because it's overgrown, I'm not sure that that's an issue that would have to be addressed.
It's just an eyesore more than anything.
I don't feel like that that's something that has to be, I don't think they're required to mow that necessarily.
I think they're required to maintain it in a certain condition. But what some people don't realize, the plants that you have in the embankment are stabilizing it. But I do know there's some language that she has, I just don't feel comfortable citing it.
I'm not sure what level that it has to be maintained.
I just, hey.
Without her?
But I know exactly what you're talking about.
You know, and if they're gonna build one on Main Street up there on the corner, I mean, that's Main Street. That's like one of the main interest ways into town, and I'd hate to have a jungle right there sitting around Main Street.
I'll have to ask her about that tomorrow.
And I do think, not to keep segueing back to the green growth, but that's exactly what we could achieve in some instances with that. Because the Green Growth Toolbox is a way of treating your stormwater and things of that nature without using ponds. Like I said, we have to make sure it's practical. But when we have that work session to see how we can take some of those ideologies and roll them into our ordinance, I think that's the time to address that conversation. But I can get the information from Beth tomorrow and get it back to you guys.
Commissioner Wade?
I'm not a big fan of retention and detention ponds myself. And Mr. Marley is right, if there's a fence down and a child gets in there and drowns, there're gonna be some problems. And that's one reason I always had something against them. The next thing is the trees you're talking about putting, I don't mean to switch back on you, but the trees that you're talking about putting in the yard of homes, those maples are beautiful come this time of year. But do we have enough help in our Public Works Department and Sanitation Department to take care of all those leaves that that would be producing?
Well, that would only apply to us if those leaves ended up in the storm drains or something like that. But it would pretty much be on the private property to maintain those.
The other thing that I was gonna mention is the mosquitoes are bad in those ponds. Especially if they're not kept clean, they get bad. And I noticed the new store down here next to Parkland Road, they built an intention pond off in the woods over there. They're cutting, cutting out over there. I don't know if that's all their land, I guess.
I would have to check with Beth because I know that they, we do have what they call mosquito dunks. It's these little round things that you put in standing water and it kinda kills the larvae for mosquitoes. I don't know if she provides those to the general public.
I need to get those, but grab my phone, go on.
Commissioner Edwards?
Chance, just something to think about. In Greenville, and I know that's where Lamarcus is from, and he may be aware of this, but they have a subdivision ordinance also. And they're really working great with the contractors and all. But once it gets developed... But once it gets developed, they have a homeowners association that comes in. And if the contractor doesn't work with the homeowners association and tell them that this is how they want it set up and all, and that the homeowner can't come in and change everything around and dig up the trees and put what they want, that's what they're running into one of the subdivisions in Greenville. Um, the home, homeowners association um officers changed hands, and they didn't like the, let's say, like um a certain tree that they had, and it really looked pretty there. So, they dug them up and put their own tree in. So, that's something, maybe that contractor should work out something with the.
The, the homeowners association conversation is a tricky one.
It is.
We had a major um issue, well, I, I wouldn't say we had an issue, it was a conundrum with Valley Inn. Um, because um our ordinance allows for store shares at seven hundred square feet. Um, and if they're below seven hundred square feet, you're allowed to go as close to our side and rear property lines as five feet. Um, if you go above seven hundred, you have to meet your regular setbacks. Well, in this uh set of covenants, C C and R's covenants and restrictions, it only allows store shares at three hundred square feet. That is direct conflict with our ordinance. Well, I, I, I'm pretty sure Dan remembers this. We talked through it. Technically, I'm not allowed to deny a request for a store share that meets our ordinance. But when I bought my house, I signed a contract with my deed that said that these covenants, I'm okay with them being governed over my neighborhood. So, it becomes a civil matter between the neighborhood association and the property owner. We can't get involved in it at all. Now, what you're talking about are what are the inroads we can make, having conversations with developers. I'll give you a perfect example of how to frame it to the developer where he actually is helped by this. Prime example is when they're um putting in sidewalks. They want us to let them wait to put the sidewalks in and curbing in, because if you are, if you had a subdivision, it's three hundred lots, you're not building all of them at once. But the neighborhood streets you put in first, if they go in and put the top coat and put everything in while they're still building houses, you're gonna rip the curbing up with the trucks. So, they will, we're working with them and allowing them to possibly not have to meet the full requirements upfront, until they actually finish a certain level of construction. That is working through it so that, because if you don't, the person or entity that has to maintain all this stuff, when they're gone, is the H O A. So, that's an example of a situation where we're talking through it. Now, how to make that into an ordinance regulation, that's the challenge. Our ordinance regulates that a H O A must be created, and our town attorney reviews them. But I don't know if we have the authority to actually dictate the language that goes in it. So, it's a delicate conversation, but it's something we're aware of.
Would the contractor be able to do that?
Yeah.
And would put the requirement on the contractor, and the contractor, and they get shades with the H O A?
That's kinda the conversation we're having. Um, how to make that a requirement is, is the challenge. But it's not something foreign to us in terms of an issue that we see. Um, it's just trying to figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, do you have anything? Ms. Beth Flowers, do you have anything?
Good presentation.
Okay.
All right, that's it. But I, I'll keep churning. Uh, if you guys have anything, throw it to me. Um, I'll look into the new urbanism stuff. Um, I'll look into the uh, I'll, I actually changed the language with the, taking the threshold of the ten lots out um while we're standing here. So, um, I'll send Jane, and I can email you guys the, a copy of the presentation. If you have any other questions, feel free to let me know.
And I think Davidson, Davidson, North Carolina, I think that's a town that we could, you could take a look at as far as some of the things they've done. That's a, that's a possibility.
Madam Mayor, I got it real quickly.
Sure.
Um, you were talking about contractors. Really don't wanna do one lot at a time for sidewalks and curbing. I wouldn't let them buy with no more than five houses at a time, um, because it gets out of control then. Uh, going in and building a hundred houses in a neighborhood, somebody's gotta have a place to walk all the time.
Yeah.
And they'll be walking in the wet concrete.
We, we do try to make sure we have practical conversations with them. Um, uh, and we work, we do work with, a lot with developers to make sure that at least what they're doing and how they're doing it makes sense. Um, if there's a situation where we know the sidewalks are required, I don't have to have you put in a hundred at a time, because if you don't put any of them, Don's not gonna accept the streets. So, and we have the seventy-five percent rule in the subdivision, where of the, if you get to a certain percentage of completion of houses, we can stop you from going to a new phase if you don't have X, Y, and Z. So, we have s- systems of checks and balances in place, but we do work a lot with developers, if they come to us with an approach that does make sense.
Okay, anyone else? You have other comments? Thank you so much.
Thanks so much.
And we'll be ready for our next information session.
Set a date?
Do you want to set a, a date for our next one?
We can make it a standing second meeting tomorrow, if y'all want to.
Okay, we can, this, we can try to do that, yeah.
I don't know if I'll make December though.
When?
I think I'll be at Christmas break in December.
What are you talking about, Madam Mayor?
Have our next meeting.
Second.
Sixteenth, November.
Is that November sixteenth?
That work?
Sixteen.
The sixteen?
November sixteen.
That'd be sixteen.
Okay. Yeah, that works.
I won't be here.
But like I said, if you guys got any, any ideas, um.
Email you the um presentation.
I'll do that. Um, so even if he can't be here, I'll, I actually start emailing these to you guys ahead of time, and then that way you'll have it, but I'll get it to you um late, just in case.
And I need that plant list too, when you get a chance.
You want a digital version, probably?
The digital version.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So, at this time, I'll call uh this work session to close, and we'll be uh back for a regular meeting at seven P M.